All right. I will call the meeting of the village board to order. Linda is coming in, so we'll hold off on the roll call. This is the April 22nd, 2021, meeting, 7:03 PM.
Ish.
Ish. And looks like we can go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Gust is absent. Trustee Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Addison.
Here.
Trustee Sidik.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Attorney Farolo.
Here.
Mayor Hucker.
Here.
Clerk McDonald is present.
All right, if you would all rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Indivisible
in God.
with liberty and justice.
Justice.
All right, first up, we have our first of two opportunities for public wishing to address the board. The first opportunity would be for anyone wishing to address the board about any items that are on the agenda. Second, towards the end of the meeting, we will have another opportunity for any and all topics to address the board. But now we'll hold it just to agenda items. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to address the board? If so, please remember to unmute yourself, give us your name, and state your case.
Good evening, my name's Angie Lackney, and I just want to ensure that all of you have had an opportunity to review a letter I submitted for agenda item under planning, building, and zoning. And ensure that the items in the letter have been taken into consideration for that topic.
Great, I can tell you that the village administrator did share that with the rest of the board members. I'm seeing some nodding heads, all right. So I guess it would be safe to say that it has been received. And as to the outcome of that, I guess that'll probably come up a little bit more during. Was there anything specific you wanted to address or emphasize, as long as we have you?
I would like to emphasize that all, myself and many of my neighbors, absolutely understand the importance of businesses in Beach Park. But we also understand that living next to a business that does not necessarily comply with ordinances for the village, the county, and the state that impact our property values is not desirable. So trying to figure out how to best work together to meet the needs of both the neighborhood as well as the business and the village.
Okay, all right. Thank you for attending, and thank you for your comments. More to come.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the board on agenda items tonight? Okay, hearing none. I would then move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight includes the following items. Approval of the village board regular meeting minutes of March 25th. The finance report from March of '21, the public safety report of March '21, the community development report of March of '21, and bills presented for payment amount of $295,836.16. Start off, is there anything that the board would have considered separately? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, moved, Miller.
We have a motion by trustee Miller?
Second.
Second by trustee Jensen. Any discussion?
I'd just like to highlight the finance report. It was, I was pleased to see that that we're in the black to a much greater degree than we had expected at the beginning of this year, this fiscal year, considering the pandemic and all the uncertainties with respect to income. And through some good luck and some vacancies, a lot of home shopping during the pandemic, and the good work of our administrative staff to control expenses, we came through it pretty comfortably. So thanks to everyone who participated in that effort.
Good.
I'll second that.
Right. Any other discussion? All right, with clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Who carries? All right, next up, under mayor's report, we have a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Point of procedure for attorney, do we need to adjourn the board meeting, or can we just continue into the hearing?
You can just continue into the hearing.
Thank you.
You can open the hearing, and then when the, when the hearing is about to close, I ask, I would just ask for a motion to close the hearing to mark the end of the hearing.
Thank you. I always like to ask that question and make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Okay, so do we have a motion to open the public hearing for the budget?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Addison?
Second, Miller.
Second.
Second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
All right. I would ask first, as long as we have our budget officer slash treasurer slash guru of all things financial, Peggy on the call. Peggy, did you want to share any overview for us?
Sure, I could do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick overview, the budget is balanced and contains continuing priorities that the board has identified. The total revenue is budgeted at 7.7 million and expenses at 7.1 million. And we show the general fund revenue increasing about 5% while we're expecting expenses to actually come in 2.7% lower. So overall, it's, it's a good budget and it's balanced.
Okay. I always like to hear those words, budget and balance, in the same sentence. That's, that's always a start. This would be the opportunity now for public comment on the budget. The budget has been available online, correct, on our website?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And normally, that would, I would be saying that it was available for review in the, in the village hall. But since village hall is not open to the public in general, we did make sure that it was available online. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the board on this budget? If so, please unmute yourself and give us your name and your comments.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I, I just want to commend all of those that were involved with that budget because you're keeping the village on the even keel. Thank you very much. That's all I had to say about it.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, well, I take a lack of comments as a good sign. Obviously, there's peace in the village, and we're not dealing with a lot of consternation on financial issues. And that's how we like it. We intentionally underspend and are very conservative with our forecasting and watching to be sure that we're going to have enough to make it to the end of the year. And this is yet, we're closing out a year that we accomplished that, and we're starting one here with this budget beginning in May that will carry that on. So if there are no other public comments, then would accept a motion to close a public hearing?
Moved, Miller.
We have a motion by trustee Miller?
Second.
Second.
Second by trustee Sidik. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Thank you. We shall move on to trustee reports. Then first up, we have finance committee trustee Johnson. What have you got for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Very little, since we have much to do with our, our budget tonight. That was our main focus recently. Our next meeting will be the 26th, 26th of May, way out there, at 6:00 PM, still virtual as far as I know. That's all I have.
Well, you actually do have a couple items on.
Those are under my report. Oh, I was expecting those under a separate item, sorry. I was thinking that was a separate item after all, all the other folks got.
That's all right.
Okay, wonderful. That, then I can leave early. The first item on my list is to offer a motion for an ordinance approving the budget for the village of Beach Park and for fiscal, the budget for the village of Beach Park for fiscal year 2021 and '22. The topic of our recent hearings, matter of fact.
Yes, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion was by Jensen, second by Addison. Discussion. I will just simply echo balanced budget. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Motion carries. That is ordinance number nine. You'll notice that we're trying something new on our agenda. We have pre-numbered ordinances and resolutions. I'm sure the confusion will come if something gets tabled or whatever, but we'll work about, that's the, that's the 1%, not the 99%. So we'll be good. All right, it looks like you got another one for us.
Yes, I do, Mayor. This one requires just a little bit of introduction, and then I'll offer you a motion. This is the annual fee resolution, and I just want to point out that there's not always increasing fees, or some that were actually reduced. There's an effort on, on part of staff to make sure that the fees cover the expenses that they're, that they're designed to cover. And without, without being onerous. And so they've done a good job of going through the entire fee schedule and have made the necessary adjustments. So that being said, I would like to offer a motion for an ordinance amending chapter 3 decimal 1 0 of Title III of the Village of Beach Park, Illinois Village Code by modifying the annual fee schedule.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Jensen?
Second by Sidik.
Second by trustee Sidik. Discussion. I will say that way, way, way back when our finance chairman brought forward the idea of a fee, fee ordinance, I thought, oh, boy, that sounds like a lot of work, and oh, what a bother, and but I have to say now, after living through numerous renditions of this, it is clean and concise. And I do appreciate the, the wisdom behind it. So kudos to.
I'm blushing. Maybe it's the coffee, I don't know. Well, thank you, Mayor, but the, the main reason that I've recommended is because it saves us money in printing all these darned ordinances. Every time you change it willy-nilly here and there, you're paying a lot for the codifiers to print, print all those pages. So that was kind of a selfish thing.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
The motion carries. Trustee Addison's asking, did the attorney have his hand up?
I do not.
Okay.
I did, I did something unintentional.
He was probably, he was probably pointing at that fly that's been circling his head for, you know.
Mayor, that now concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you ever so kindly. Trustee Gus is not on the call, as best I can tell. Is there a report on his behalf? Nope. All right, then we will move on to planning, building, and zoning committee, trustee Wells chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. First on the agenda was a motion to adopt an ordinance extending granted by ordinance 2016, that's the old S1, for the conversion of a non-conforming youth in this SR district at 12920 West Wadsworth Road. In this, at the last board meeting, on March 25th, 2021, the board of trustees tabled consideration for plan commission, recommendations to revoke the conditional use permit for jet multi-fund landscape, 12920, for Wadsworth Road, item to table to allow the business to act accordingly. With staff and the rest general, the act of compliance with the division order. Staff has conducted three fight business, at the initial visit on March 26th, have identified a list of priority for the business to address. At the second and third, slightly, staff observed progress had been made. The more detailed and strict progress is provided in the attached memo. Based on the progress that has been made, the board, in addition to the simple extension of the conditional use permit, the ordinance granting a one-year extension that is drafted by the board for the board consideration. The ordinance includes this action, item that lasts within three months and six months, under two. Approval so that the application for continued progress is clear.
Mr. Mayor, I do have my hand up this time.
Sure.
I believe this item was tabled at the last meeting. So before we take action, I asked for a motion to remove this item from the table. Mark, I am correct on about that, right? Didn't you table this?
Yes.
Yes, you're correct. So there, there, we do need a motion to untable this item prior to any further action.
I'll make a motion to untable the item.
We have a motion by trustee Addison. Do we have a second? We have a second by trustee Wells. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Consider the motion untabled. And so I, you were about to, or you were in the process of making a motion, is that correct, trustee Wells?
That is correct, Your Honor.
All right, if I might restate the motion, at least as it's on the agenda, it would be an ordinance extending the conditional use permit granted by ordinance 2016 oh, one for the conversion of a non-conforming youth in an SR district at 12920 West Wadsworth Road. Does that accurately reflect your motion?
My motion.
That is correct.
All right, do we have a second to that motion?
Second, Miller.
We have a second by trustee Miller. I would ask if, Andrew, if you might be able to add some color to the report that we all have, and it's very thorough, but I just maybe give us a sense in the tone for how things are going over there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, we, we met with the, the business several times over the course of the last month. As was just noted, this item was tabled specifically for the purpose of allowing the business a final opportunity to meet with staff, identify items, priority items to address, and, and show progress over the course of the month as part of their extension request. We've documented in the, in the packet, the progress. You have before and after photos. I've been out to the site again today and met with them. The, the progress is noticeable. There are a few big-ticket items that have been taken care of, very large piles of scrap metal that have been removed. There are a couple of vehicles that have not yet been removed, that they're working on removing. A dilapidated woodshed at the northwest corner of the property has been removed. And just general cleanup has taken place. There were a variety of, of materials that were removed from in front of the garage area. There are photographs of each of these items. At this point, what, what I've drafted for your consideration is an extension of one year. It identifies additional items for them to address over the, the first 90 days, roughly three months, and the, and the next 90 days. So if the board does wish to consider an extension, there's a clearer framework for what needs to be addressed over a fairly short amount of time. Most of these items are items that were part of the original 2016 ordinance. And I've discussed this with the, with the business, and they do understand that there's an expectation that if they are fortunate enough to receive an extension, that it will be there will be an expectation that they'll continue to meet with us and continue to show the progress on those items.
Okay. Certainly, from an enforcement point of view, we have the ability to monitor progress with some regularity as these milestones are being accomplished to confirm that we have got compliance, at least compliance heading in the right direction. As our, as our residents stated, and I agree wholeheartedly, that it's important that we don't chase businesses out, or however you would, you would otherwise word it, but that we have, you know, we have an obligation to our residents, especially those that happen to have a direct view of, of a mess, to make sure that that mess is being addressed and cleaned up and, and dealt with. So all of that to say that I really, I, I lean towards the path that we're on, that staff has, has worked up. But I guess the way I would word it is I would also expect that our zoning administrator would step in and with, with vigor. If we have a non-compliance and non-cooperation start as a result of, of, you know, maybe being busy doing other things or what have you, if progress stops, then I would expect our zoning administrator to take swift action to either get it back on track or to recommend revocation of the conditional use. So that would be my two cents on this, and I'm certainly willing to hear any and all discussion on this topic.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a question based on what you just said. How easy or complicated is it to revoke this extension if indeed some of the conditions stop being met? What would that entail?
Well, we would certainly have to cite the property owner. We would certainly have to build a record of non-compliance and, and non-cooperation. And then we would have to turn to our, our legal advisors. We have done this in the past. I might point out that we had a auto dealership that lost their conditional use permit was revoked due to the activities that were going on outside the boundaries of the conditional use permit. And so it's not unprecedented that we would take an action like that, but certainly it's not our desire. But I do want everyone to understand that we do have that safety valve, if you will, if we get into a severe situation.
I can add to that.
I have a question.
Hold on, trustee Sidik. Jim, you wanted to weigh in on that?
Sure, Mayor, I think you laid that out perfectly. We do have the ability to issue citations if the property gets into a condition that is nuisance, reaches a nuisance level. We can seek conjunctive relief in the circuit court. But ultimately, if we're going to revoke, which is an option, we would conduct a hearing like we did recently before planning and zoning. It would come back to the village board for a revocation decision to be made, and, and that then would be followed by an appeal to the mayor if they choose to. So there's citations, possible injunctive relief, and the possibility of revocation, all within our arsenal.
And the plus that I would say is that the, the family and our staff have been interacting and working together on this really for the first time. And, and so I think it's important that this dialogue continue and that there be regular updates and regular check-ins by staff and code enforcement and the like. Go ahead, trustee Sidik.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. Is it possible, I'm liking the, the photos that I'm seeing, I can clearly see that progress is being made. But is it an option for the board to table this item again until we see continued progress and working with staff over the next month before a conditional use is actually authorized?
I mean, we, we could certainly take that path. It's not going to change the use that's going on, and at some point, it, it does become a kind of a chicken or egg thing as to which way we, you know, we hold off and let them continue to operate and hold their feet to the fire, or we just hold their feet to the fire. Again, I'll emphasize that this is really the first time that we've been aggressive in this situation with staff through zoning and through code enforcement. And I think, I, I don't know, I've, I'm hearing good input from our staff, and I'm also hearing the right things coming out of the, the owner's mouth as well. At least we heard that, that the last meeting, and he did carry forward into action in the last month. So it certainly is the board's pleasure, which way, whichever way we would choose to go on this.
And then also taking into consideration the letter that had come forward from some of the neighbors there. So, okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, excuse me, I just have one more comment. This situation didn't happen overnight. I mean, clearly, everything that's been accumulated and deteriorated must have been going on for a period of years. So to expect them to get this massive amount of junk removed in a month is kind of unrealistic.
Right.
In my opinion. So, you know, it almost seems like, like the village enabled this situation by not being more aggressive to clean it up a long time ago. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. I'm willing to give them the extension, taking that part into consideration.
Sure. Trustee Addison, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say too, I agree with you, and Linda, to what your question, I, I agree with wanting to see how things are going to go going forward, but I also think, like John said, we should start the clock running. If we give them this extension, Andrew spelled it out, and it's, and it's in the document that they have a 90-day milestone, then they have a 180-day milestone in addition to the one-year milestone. And they have to meet the things. And Regina, I'll, I'll agree with you. It's taken a long time to, to get to this point. Out of the 11 items that were highlighted in, in the packet, I see that seven of them were either addressed or partially addressed, and only four of them they have not gotten to yet. So in my opinion, they're making an effort to go with it. So again, I thought there was some very constructive comments in the letter that we got from the adjoining homeowner. And I like, you know, obviously, we're, we are considering not giving them a lengthfully extension. And, you know, in the past, we've done three-year extensions, and then other businesses have gone a year at a time. We're going even a little more stringent. My only question is, I know at the last hearing, or maybe the one before, when we discussed it, there was some confusion as to whose response. it, there was some confusion as to who's responsible at this location. There's three different business names that are using this as an address. So are we comfortable, Andrew, with the the main point of contact for this? Or are we trying to deal with three different people? Or how's that going?
The businesses are, they're offshoots of the original Jose and Sons. So one of the sons, Jose, has carried on the Jose and Sons business name. His brother Sergio is operating as Sergio's Landscape Creations. And then Sergio, I can't remember your brother's name, Mario?
Mario.
Is operating a business. So the, the overall intensity of the use is consistent. The total number of employees right now that use this property as a base of operations is 10. It fluctuates seasonally, so it can go up to the number that was originally listed in the 2016 ordinance, which was 15. So the staff is comfortable with the point of contacts that we have, and and the verbiage in this draft ordinance was to document the three businesses that have evolved from the original business.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor, if I may.
I think I heard Trustee Wells first.
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to thank the neighbors that have provided to the village, providing their perspective. We don't have the luxury of living next to the site. They see things that we are not privy to, to different sets of land. They see things that we, again, we not have access to, or we might know, but when I brought that attention, I want to thank them for bringing forth their perspective and their view and their opinion. I have a question for Andrew. It appears in the documentation that concerns of the neighbors are being addressed, or have been or will be addressed in the coming months, or days.
That's correct. Some of the, some of the points listed in the letter provided by the neighboring property owners, I had heard from them in phone calls prior to preparing the draft ordinance. So the pest control was a concern that hadn't been raised with us previously. The burning was part of the original 2016 ordinance, but I highlighted it in the draft ordinance and have spoken with the business since then, and they, they have indicated that they do understand the the burning regulations.
Your correspondence also mentioned some additional plantings for screening, those be screenings between residents and activity.
The screening that was envisioned, if you're, if you're looking at the southeast corner of the property, the view from Wadsworth Road, there was a gap in the landscaping, the existing vegetation between the residential property to the east end of the property. There was a gap near a pond. The family has already installed, they've already planted a few arboretum in that, in that area. But that, that was the particular area that we had been discussing with them, was improving the, the opening in the, in the landscape border on the east side of the property.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Trustee. Oh, sorry.
Now, if I may, Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, I, first of all, I'm surprised that the, that the neighbor tolerated this as long as they have, and I'm glad that they've spoken up at this point, and I hope they, I hope they don't have to again. And I'd like to get Andrew's sense of the likelihood of compliance once we, should we, should we approve this thing and take away a tool, a compliance tool that he's got in his toolbox? Does he feel confident that, that they'll continue on despite the fact that this is no longer hanging over them?
I think that the expectation that the mayor laid out a few minutes ago is something similar to what I have already expressed with the business, the businesses. They have indicated that they do understand, they do wish to stay in in this location. They're, they're here, they can certainly speak for themselves, I'm just relaying what they told me. So they do, they do indicate that they, they wish to comply, they wish to keep working with us, and that they would like to, to have the opportunity to continue to address these issues over the 90 and 180-day period that are spelled out.
Yeah, it'd be my hope that, that they accomplish these things not because, under duress, just because it's the right thing to do and to, to keep a neat and orderly operation and, and to not burden the neighbors with, with the mess that, that Mike, I was shocked at the pictures you provided. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have tolerated that as long next door to me, I'll tell you that. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I got, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments from board members?
Just, Mayor, just one other thing.
Sure.
If they have to encourage those individuals, that it's important, them not only cleaning up the site, but maintaining the site from this point forth.
Certainly. Okay.
I have one last question.
Sure.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank the property owners for doing what they're doing. And I want to make sure that the property owners are aware of the spring cleanups that we do, which, you know, we have one right around the corner here, and according to the pictures, there's a lot of items here that they can put out and take advantage of the spring cleanup that we do. So I hope the homeowners, the business owners actually take advantage. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Well, we have, I think, heard from everyone. We do have a motion on the table. I guess at this point, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. I'm sorry, hold up.
The motion just stated to extend it for one year. Do we need to put language in there that there's, that they need to meet the requirements in the interim?
It's in the ordinance. The motion is to approve the ordinance. The ordinance has the requirement, the interim requirement spelled out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. All right. And I would ask the clerk, please call the roll. Mary Jo's sitting very, very still.
I think she's frozen. I don't see her cat moving.
I thought Frozen was a cartoon movie.
She's pulling a curtain.
Boy.
Uh-oh.
Will, uh...
Who's in the window next door? Can you knock? Where'd she go?
She's not, she's now vanished. Is that another, is that another movie out there?
You can appoint a clerk, right, Jim? You definitely can. We can appoint a recording secretary in, in light of her absence. You can appoint Mr. Huber. I think he'd be volunteer.
I'd make a motion to appoint Mark Huber, village administrator, as the recording executive for the remainder of the meeting in the absence of our clerk.
We have a motion. We have a second by Trustee Jensen. Would the interim clerk please call the roll?
Wish me luck. Trustee Addison.
What are we, oh, aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gust is absent. Trustee Miller.
Aye.
And Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Well done. You did that from memory.
Absolutely, sir.
I'm appreciating the fact that you know all the trustees' names. All right. Now we have the motion to, that's on the, in front of us now. Would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gust is absent. Trustee Addison.
This is the motion that Trustee Wells had made before we lost. We were in the middle of taking the roll call when we lost our clerk. Do you want me to restate the motion?
What did we just vote on?
That was appointing him.
Appointing me clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was your motion.
My motion to appoint, you're right, thank you.
Holy moly.
Frozen. I was frozen, but I was still running my mouth.
You're still here.
All right, this, I will vote aye to approve the motion.
Thank you.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
And is that everybody?
That is. You did well, again.
Better than me.
So I, I know that the, that Sergio Ficundo is showing that he's on the call. I would simply take this to heart. I think that the village is, is being as generous now as it ever will be on this topic and this property, and we want nothing more than, than the success of all three businesses and for you to be a good neighbor to those that are around you and that, that will have nothing but good reports coming back from our staff. So I wish you all the best.
Can I just go ahead and thank you all trustees and also Mr. Andrew, being on top of everything we've been trying to get as fast as we can. This is, was a big, big mess that we had out there, and definitely we're moving along. There's still some more things still to do that we know of, but we're not going to stop till we get all your compliances to be done. So I greatly want to appreciate each and every one of you, Mayor and all trustees. So thank you, be happy, me and my other brother, Jose, and Mario.
Very good.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, thanks.
All right. Moving on, well, I should, I should ask Trustee Wells, was there anything else that you wanted to cover tonight?
One other small item, Your Honor. A full year information, a total of $4,225, dollars in fine, the order to be paid, conjunction with orders issued at the March of the hearing. The amounts collected during the month of March was $4,150, including $2,600, in citations of $1,550 in adjudication fine. Also, a total of $34,000, $300 collected in committee during the month of March, the total valuation of $486,610. That includes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on then to public relations and intergovernmental committee, Trustee Miller.
Your Honor, first of all, I'd like to announce that our Lake County Sheriff's Office will conduct another prescription drug take-back day. That will be this Saturday, April 24th, here at the Village Hall, the Beach Park Village Hall. And this will be taking place from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. And for more information, I just direct people to take a look at the village website and our social media pages for the details. And we definitely thank the Sheriff's Department for continuing to provide this service for our people, people all around the area, really. It's very valuable to us. And then secondly, I want to express appreciation to our, our Lady of Humility, Knights of Columbus, because once again, they have provided their rash of volunteers to get out there and clean up North Avenue, one of our main village thoroughfares. And they start from Wadsworth Avenue on the north, they go all the way to Blanchard Road on the south. And they did their first pickup event on March 27th. It was very productive. Boy, it was quite a mess. I'm sure Pat was there, and he could appreciate how, how it looked when the snow melted. And I understand, I'm not sure if they've done their second one yet, but there is a plan, or I'm told there is a plan to do another one, because the first time they were out there, they actually ran out of bags. So kudos and thanks again to the Knights of Columbus. This is a really valuable service that they provide. And not only does it help beautify the village, but it frees up public work, so they can get out there and do other things besides picking up the stuff that people so carelessly throw out and concentrate on other projects. So that's another round of appreciation I'd like to extend, and thank you for that.
Let the record reflect that our clerk is back with us. You were frozen there for a while.
And I was, and it just went away, so.
Now, we did, in your, Mark will have to fill you in, because we appointed him as clerk of the works for a few minutes there in your absence, and so he'll have some, a couple of votes for you to record. But welcome back, it's good to see you. And he's, he did an excellent job, but he's no Clerk McDonald. That's all I have to say about that.
Do I need to make a motion to fire the interim clerk, or is that implied?
I think that's implied. Yeah, yeah.
It happens by operation of law, as our clerk has referred.
The next up, we have Public Safety Committee, Trustee Sidik.
Thank you. Is the Fire Chief with us this evening?
We have both the Fire Chief and Lieutenant Cavelli from the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Okay, is, is there anything that the chief from the Fire Department would like to report on behalf of the village?
He's walking to the microphone as we speak.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to, one quick thing. We are doing our biannual bike path cleanup Saturday, May 22nd. So if anyone would like to join, pick up garbage with us, can meet at the station, Station 1 on Lewis at 8:30.
Okay.
We're going to start around 9:00 then, and we're usually done around 11:00. So we go from, it's York House up to 33rd Street.
Got it.
So again, it's open to everyone.
Excellent.
Anyone who wants to come, pick up garbage with us, you're more than welcome.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And we can make sure you don't run out of bags. If you need bags, let us know.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Chief. And is that all from the chief?
Yes, that was it.
Okay, and then the Sheriff's Office is with us as well. Do they have anything that they'd like to report, including anything from the recent sheriff's meeting?
Thank you very much, Trustee Sidik. Actually, Trustee Miller stole my thunder. I was excited to announce our drug take-back that'll be happening this weekend, Saturday at Village Hall. So we always get a great response from the Beach Park area, very convenient for the Beach Park residents, where they don't have to drive to Waukegan or another facility to unload unwanted or unneeded prescription drugs or over-the-counter drugs. So we hope for a good turnout, as we always see. And Trustee Miller, thank you very much for reminding the community about that. We've pushed some information out about that as well on our sheriff's app today. So everybody that signed up for the Beach Park channel got a message with the flyer pushed directly to the palm of their hand today. As far as the meeting with Village Administrator Huber, that went well. There are no major updates to report. We do continue to investigate the shots that were fired in Founder's Park several weeks ago. Detectives are continuing to investigate that, follow up leads. We are very, very fortunate and very lucky that nobody was struck in that park. One of the questions that came up at that meeting is extra patrols at the park, and I pulled some stats for the past two years, which showed, in the past two years, we've had 705 calls for service at the park. However, don't let that number startle you. Well over 600 of those were, were our deputies doing extra patrols at the park, foot patrols, checking on suspicious vehicles, and conducting routine business. So there is a heavy presence out there. We continue to have a heavy presence. We're trying to make it a priority to, in that area during closing time, sunsets, to help, just remind everybody in the park that the park does close when the sun goes down. So the investigation into that is ongoing, and we will continue our extra patrols there as well.
That's wonderful news. Thank you very much. Okay, Net, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you very much.
No questions. I just have a comment for the officer, for the deputy. I really appreciate, I really appreciate what you said about driving through there and just kind of nudging people that dusk is when the park closes. I think some people know, but probably a lot of people don't, especially the ones that may come in from out of the area. And, you know, just a friendly little reminder, might make a big, a big difference someday.
Definitely, and, and you're very welcome. We are doing that. And, you know, I am happy to say that the stats show we don't have major problems at the park. We've had some dispatch calls for service that you would, are very routine for any type of public place, but there's nothing that's, excuse me, excuse me, there's nothing that stands out as being worrisome on our end.
Great, okay.
Okay. Very good. All right. Then moving on, Public Works Committee, Trustee Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot of things that I'd like to say, but for the sake of time tonight, I will just... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot of things that I'd like to say, but for the sake of time tonight, I will just say that I appreciate the sheriff's department for doing the drug takeback. From a public work standpoint, drugs, especially antibiotic type, type drugs do wreak havoc on the treatment plants and cause a lot of problems. And so we like to encourage people to return them where they will be properly disposed of and not flushed down the toilet and damage our infrastructure that way at the treatment plant. So I appreciate that from that standpoint too. And I think that's about all. Thank you.
All right, and don't flush your alligators either.
That is also troubling.
Yes.
Pat does not like the alligators in the sewers.
It's, can be problematic as well. Yes, yes. All right, I have nothing to report on behalf of the TIF committee. Are there any additional staff reports that need to be shared tonight?
No, nothing, mayor. Thank you.
All right, I have no old business on the agenda. Is there any new business to come for the board tonight? All right, we have no need, oh, so boy, it just about went right past the citizens wishing to address the board. Now would be the time for any and all comments to the board from any citizen. All we've asked is that you give us your name and state your case. All right, hearing none.
This is Angie Lackney again.
Yes.
And I appreciate the happy discussion on the Jose's and Sons property. And congratulations to them for being provided a conditional use. But I will say, if we as neighbors do not see continued improvement or if we see things that are just not right, is there a point of contact for us with the village to have continued discussion instead of the previous lack of any response from multiple years ago?
Yep, and, and I think you have Andrew's email address. He is your primary point of contact. He is over zoning as well as code enforcement. And so the code enforcement staff reports directly to him. You can, you should know, he has taken a personal interest in this. He has been on site. He's been taking these pictures personally as well. And I, I want to thank you for your input. I think part of the solution here is for the property owners to understand the impact they're having on their neighbors. And your letter does reflect that. It, it might seem innocent enough to burn a pile of brush or to let a vehicle sit or to be playing loud music while you're out there working in the yard. But to understand that that's impacting the neighbors, it kind of puts it in a different perspective. And, and I think we've heard from Mr. Facundo that they get it. And so between our staff doing their due diligence and people such as yourself that are, are living adjacent, if you're seeing a problem, you know, say something and, and communicate it.
Thank you for that. And I, I truly hope that going forward, we can be much better neighbors than we have all been.
Yes. Okay. Very good. Are there any other citizen comments for the board tonight? Okay, hearing none. We have no cause tonight for an executive session. And. I'm sorry?
Bob Johnson.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, you know, mayor, I've been going to the store here in Beach Park. One of the oldest stores right, located right here in Beach Park. For many years, when O'Connor's owned that grocery store when I was 16 years old. So I, I stop over there all the time and because I'm handicapped, he comes out and takes care of me. And he's been having some problems with the, with the village and his signs and whatever. Anyway, the one thing he asked me to do, he's worked 16 hours a day. He puts in 16 hours a day. And he, they wanted him to come over because they cited him about his sign out in front. But he said he couldn't do anything about it until the weather got better. And now he asked me only one thing. He said, would you please ask the mayor if he or the administrator could come over? One of the administrators could come over and talk to him directly about the situation where they've cited him about his sign. So it, instead of going to a junction before that, that he, he would like somebody to come over there. And it'd be nice if, because you know, this, this guy's a hard worker. And he's the only store, and especially for the trailer parks. The people walk over from the trailer parks over there to buy their groceries and so on. And anyway, thank you. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
It's kind of you to speak on his behalf. Certainly the staff heard your comments, so thank you for that. All right, I guess we're on to item 12.
Mayor, it'd be my pleasure to offer a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by trustee Jensen, a second by trustee Addison. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
And trustee Wells.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I just would like to say it's a pleasure working with all of you. I'm glad we all have the opportunity to spend the next several, couple of years together, so.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations, Jim.
All right, guys.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
Night, everyone.
All right.
They say.